Carry what we do with this?
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of Manoisa City Council. The time is 12:01 PM and I now declare this meeting open. I'd like to start off by acknowledging the traditional custodians on the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. I'd also just like to read the council's recording of council meeting policy. Please note, this special meeting of Manoisa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in this gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. Could I now invite, which councillor is going to do the prayer? Councillor Streton to do the prayer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lord, let the light of your divine wisdom direct our deliberations and decisions and shine forth in all the proceedings and acts of the Manoisa City Council. May we seek to preserve peace and harmony, promote wellbeing in our city and continue to bring the blessings of good government in this area of our responsibility. Lord, grant this prayer to us who work for the common good through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I have, well, I'd like to ask if a councillor would like to move a motion that in accordance with section 277 of the local government... Do we want to let Mayor, Deputy Mayor in?
Oh, yes.
We should let Deputy Mayor participate, yes. So would the councillor like to move a motion that in accordance with section 277 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, that the following participants will be taking part in this meeting via teleconference and will be noted as in attendance? And that's Deputy Mayor Phil Barwick. Would someone like to move that motion?
Move.
Thank you, Councillor Streton. Would someone like to second that motion? Thank you, Councillor Tully. All those in favour? And that's accepted. That makes us two, four, six. No apologies. We do have people in the public, although I believe no one's speaking. That's correct. Number five, declarations of conflict of interest. I now invite councillors to declare any conflicts of interest in regard to the agenda. And I will put my name forward for item 7.2.
I'd like to declare a conflict of interest prescribed because I am the subject of the complaint.
Thank you, Councillor McCrae.
Councillor Streton would like to declareable interest in 7.2 or so as I was on the card, same card as Councillor McCrae during the council election.
Thank you.
Councillor Fortune, I have a declarable interest in item 7.2 because I was a running mate of Councillor McCrae in the previous election.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune.
Through the chair, I would like to declare an interest as well in item 7.2. We are close together because we're in the same team. Peter McCrae.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, yeah, I've got a declarable conflict of interest, 7.2. I'm associate of Councillor McCrae.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, if there's no more conflicts of interest, that'll take us through now to item number 6.1, which is correspondence to the Queensland Premier regarding the Public Health Directives. And the motion is that council endorses correspondence to the Honourable Anastasia Palage MP, Premier of Queensland, regarding the public health directives. Would someone like to move that motion?
Move.
Thank you, Councillor Tully. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second, Coghlan.
Thank you, Councillor Coghlan. Any comments in regard to this one? Okay.
Through the chair, would the mayor read out the letter, please? It's on the mayor's letterhead, coming from Manoisa City Council.
I certainly can.
Thank you.
So this letter, and I just want to just clarify that this letter has been agreed to by all seven councillors. There was no objections from any councillor. And it says, Dear Premier, Manoisa City Council recognises the challenges being faced by local businesses in relation to the severe shortage of labour and the need to comply with the Queensland Public Health Directives in relation in a relatively short period of time. While Manoisa is located in a remote part of Queensland, the issues being experienced by local businesses are not dissimilar to other operating west of the Great Dividing Range. However, the level of remoteness at times compounds the challenges. Manoisa City Council welcomes the funding that has been channelled into small and medium businesses by the state and federal governments thus far, and trusts that state and federal government will continue to provide funding and resources that will assist in attracting more people to the region. Manoisa City Council will, whenever possible, promote local business and encourage people to buy local as per Commerce North West Initiative. Additionally, council will encourage local business to be involved in events such as the Great Australian Bites, which is occurring on the 26th of January 2022. Council will continue to work on both delivery and construction of the Centennial Place project as well as the Central Business District Master Plan. Council's Economic Development Officer will continue to engage with small businesses and look for opportunities to deal with issues such as labour shortages and training in collaboration, in a collaborative manner with the TAFE and young school leavers. Manoisa City Council wishes to express its thanks to the Premier and her government for keeping Queenslanders safe during these uncertain times. Council would request that the Premier carefully consider the impact of current and public future, sorry, of current and future public health directives on small and medium businesses, noting that all actions must be undertaken in the broader public context. Should you wish further information, please do not hesitate to contact me on 47473200. Yours faithfully, Councillor Denny O'Slade, her worshipper, Mayor of Manoisa.
Okay. Just for a matter of public record, I don't think I did agree to the letter when it was sent around. Not that I didn't agree, but I didn't give my agreeance in writing for the letter.
Actually, we didn't get anything back from your talk councillor?
No, that's right, yeah. So I didn't do it, I wasn't able to at the time. And then by the time I did get to read my emails, everyone else had agreed to it, so...
So you're putting forward you don't agree with the letter?
I think it's a bit soft, but I don't think it's as hard as we should have gone, that's all. But everyone else is in agreeance with it, so...
Okay. And there was ample opportunity to come back, councillor?
Yeah, like I said, yeah.
It's really disappointing that you've actually come to a meeting now and said that you didn't have an opportunity when you had plenty of opportunity.
No, I didn't say that. I just said for public record, I just want it noted that I didn't send my agreeance in. By the time I was able to access my emails, everyone else had agreed to it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying anything else, that's all I'm saying. I was incapable of answering the email when it come through originally, that's all.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so this now unfortunately takes us straight into confidential business. Thank you for everyone who participated in the gallery, thank you for coming along, it's great to see people come along. And one of the councillors would like to move the motion that council considers the following confidential reports intermeeting close to the public in accordance with section 254J of the Local Government Regulation 2012. And that's for 7.1, the Family Fund Pre-Cent Redevelopment Stage Two Skate Bowl Redevelopment Project and 7.2, Office of the Independent Assessor Complaint Referral. Thank you, Councillor Fortune. Would someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Coghlan. And that takes us into closed. Thank you. Can I get someone to move that council moves out of closed business into open business?
Move.
Thank you, Councillor Streton. Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favour? And that's carried. So that goes to item 7.1. Okay, so the officer's recommendation is that... Would someone like to move that council award this State Bowl Replacement Contract a se... Sorry, it would help if I put my glasses on, I was just wondering why I couldn't read that. Okay, so that council award the State Bowl Replacement Contract a separate portion of the Family Fund Pre-Cent Development Stage Two Project to Orca Constructions Queensland Proprietary Limited for $395,266 GXT exclusive?
Coghlan.
Thank you, Councillor Coghlan. Someone second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councillor Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to 7.2. And can I ask the councillors who have a conflict to... Please leave the room and I'll hand over the chair to Councillor Coghlan.
No, no, I hope the door opens.
Item 7.2, we have a recommendation that council accept the office of the independent assessor's action under the council investigation policy and that council engage an external investigator to investigate the complaint. David, can I move that?
You can move that, councillor.
So I will move that recommendation.
I'll second that through the chair.
So that's seconded through Councillor Fortune. Now going to close the business.
Sorry, sorry, those in favour?
Hi, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried.
Councillor Slade. Okay. I need my glasses again. And that brings us to the end of the special meeting. The time is 12:30 PM and I now declare the meeting closed. Thank you, everybody, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.